And now I propose a word for the August 17, 2020 meeting of the Canadian Defense District Board of Trustees. Current time is 6:03. If the minutes show that there are four of us present with all members in attendance, please rise to the education given by Ms. Harrell. We remain standing in the Pledge of Allegiance on the Texas flag of Mr. Mason.
Hi, guys, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here tonight to make decisions for our wonderful community and we thank you for blessing our school this year to all three students, parents, and staff. We ask that you keep your hand in the palm as we make these decisions and in all we do, may we glorify you in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to every mother and child who stands in the name of one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one safe and under God, one indivisible.
Item two on the agenda is the public hearing on the 2020-2021 budget and 2020 tax rate presented by Ms. Brandy.
Okay, we're going to start off with the 2020 tax rate. We will not be adopting a tax rate tonight because we got certified estimates instead of actually certified values and we're not allowed to adopt the tax rate until we have the certified value. So we'll be getting those hopefully by next week and so I'll be bringing that back to you all in September for adoption. But we're going to go ahead and have a public hearing. This is the second year of the compression from the state in the Biennial. Last year they compressed the MNO budget down to 1.0684 for the tax rate. This year the maintenance and operation tax rate would be 0.9761. That is a decrease of over nine cents. So on about $100,000 home, they'll be saving $92 a year. That is state compression. They're the ones that now pretty much dictate what the school district's tax rates are.
Can you repeat that number of our tax rate right now?
For MNO, it's 0.9761.
Thank you.
For interest and savings, it will remain at 50 cents. That is adopted by our constituents in the public and they did vote on that in the last poll election at 50 cents and it does remain 50 cents. Any questions on the tax rate? We will move on to the budget. There's three budgets that are required to be adopted by the school board. That's the general fund, the child nutrition fund, and the debt service fund. Those are the three that I'll be speaking about during the public hearing, but you will also adopt the accelerated education prior to adopting this one. For the general fund, local revenues is 51 million point five, state revenues 109.4 million, and federal revenues 1.3 million for total revenues of 162.2 million. Expenditures, total expenditures of 162.078 million, the majority of that for actual instructional services. We will have a transfer out this year, other uses of 141,000 that will be transferred into the child nutrition fund and you will see that in their budget. The child nutrition fund budget has local revenues of almost 9 million, state revenues of 363,000, and federal revenues of 6.9 million for total revenues of 9.1 million. Expenditures, 9 billion 327. That's where the transfer in will come in of 141,000 that we will be supplementing that fund. The debt service fund, local revenues of 25.7 million, state revenues of 1.8 million, and no federal revenues going to the debt service fund. Total expenditures, which is approved debt by the public, of 28.8 million, leaving a shortfall of 1.293. This is planned. This was one that we talked about two years ago that we're drawing down the fund out and debt service fund. This is based off the estimate of 4 billion, 823 billion, 567,553 in taxable value at a 97 and 1/2% collection rate and average daily attendance of 15,496. Any questions on the budgets?
All right, so item three on the agenda is consideration of the adoption of the 2020-2021 accelerated education budget. Are there any other questions before the discussion?
I only need to present that one.
You already did that one?
No, I need to present the accelerated education budget.
Well, you already did that before.
Yes.
So we're going to go to that one.
No, I need to present this one. I need to adopt this before you can adopt the regular budget.
So we're on that one.
Yeah, I agree, yes. So the accelerated education--
There's no vote on either item, I'm sorry. Item for your--
So the accelerated education budget is a balanced budget. This is something in state law that we have to do. We just have to say that we are actually budgeting for our average kids prior to budgeting as a state on debt money that we get from the state. The revenues are 5 million 464,952. Expenditures, all on destruction and some per development of 5 million 464,952. So I'm asking that you adopt the accelerated education budget after that.
Any other questions? Further discussion? Is there a motion to adopt the 2020-2021 accelerated education budget? Motion had been moved and seconded. There would be no further discussion. The vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Because another motion is approved. Next, item four on the agenda is consideration of the adoption of the 2020-2021 general fund, child nutrition, debt service budget. Is there a question?
Just as I presented in the public hearing, I'm asking is the administration that you have heard the budgets that were presented for child nutrition, debt service, and general fund?
Are there other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the 2020-2021 general fund, child nutrition, and debt service budget? Motion had been moved and seconded. There would be no further discussion. The vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Because no motion is approved. Thank you, Ms. Brandy. Item five on the agenda is open forum. We have two signed up. So we're going to start off with Ms. Renteria. How are you, Ms. Stephanie? Your time is not going to start yet, so I'm going to read a little formal statement and then I'll give you a second to get ready. And then I'm going to read the open forum because we also have Mr. Matt Gray here to speak, so we'll read the open forum statement once and then we'll cover everybody there. So the board encourages comments from citizens of the district or employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or representative of group may do so at this time. Board asks the comments pertaining to public education issues to be no longer than five minutes. Remember, the board may not discuss any issues that are not posted on our agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion to appropriate time and date. In addition, the board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administration level a prompt and defensible resolution of complaints and concerns. And all our policies are always available at our district website at kaneisb.org. So Ms. Harrell is going to hold the time. She's got about five minutes. We'll get her set up and then we will let you have the floor. So you're ready to go, Ms. Stephanie?
Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Stephanie Renteria. As my application says, I'm here to talk about 504 plans. I am a mother of three. I have two elementary age school children and one junior high. In regards to the 504, I am here because clearly we've all been doing online learning for the last week and I'm sure a lot of you, the parents and a lot of the family behind me, have also experienced struggles. To say the least, with the 504 plan, I am a parent who is struggling, who has not received support necessary to address the children, my child, and I'm sure the rest are too, that needs special attention, needs redirection. I am sensitive and completely respect the parents who are advocating for their children to stay home for safety measures and that's fine, but my biggest concern is where is my choice? Like I said, my child does need the help. She does, we haven't heard from the school or we haven't heard options. Can she see teachers certain times throughout the week just for herself? Because she's unable to sit through this curriculum. She's not a one-size-fits-all model and most of my regular children are neither. So we need help. We need help in that area and I'm asking you guys, what can you guys offer us? What can you guys reassure us with in this aspect? I'm asking that schools do reopen for at least for these children that do need that special attention. I know we did a survey back in August to see what parents were willing to let their children go into school and the teachers took one too. Maybe I haven't seen it, but was that ever disclosed to any of us how many teachers and parents were willing to let their children learn in school and on campus? Those are my questions to you guys. It's hard. Life balances are hard. We're working with parents and I'm probably like the least of a soft story. There's parents that have lost their dogs, there's parents that are going and sitting on those buses and I keep thinking, if I had still been on that bus with my child, no way. She gets behind, you know? We need help. I ask that you guys consider that and that when you think about our kids, consider of all the teachers and them putting themselves at risk, but we are and we all need to kind of just embrace what's happening, but happily and in peace. And I think it's you guys, I believe it's you guys to really find that spot for all of us to come together and give us a voice to choose to care because it's being stripped at the moment, right? We get to choose what we want to do and I ask that you guys give us that opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Okay, and next is Mr. Gray. How are you, sir?
Good.
Good.
I got the answer.
Good, sir. Thank you for coming.
It's kind of a last minute for me, so I didn't get a chance to collect all my thoughts, probably not like to, but I think we're probably a like-minded group and want to see the kids go back to school. I think we've allowed peers to reach far enough in our homes, in our community to where it's slowing the growth of the kids, the kids, the community and it's pretty disappointing to witness and see, especially as a father of four, I've got another school board, two kindergartners, and a little guy who makes it almost impossible for the kindergartners to help us to learn. And that's just barely scratching the surface. I think we could dig and scratch through all the internet issues, service issues, the kids, we could get into the single moms and single dads and small business owners and the working parents. I just got a question for where we're at on this. Shame on me and shame on my peers if we could have done something before because I'm not really sure how it got here either of the mainstream headlines that we just get nailed with daily, so hopefully we can figure that out before we leave here today. God bless the educators. I don't think myself or anyone else is here to give them a knock, but it's just not a knock for the kids, it's not all their attention. It's all funny local memes. Someone texted me, made my wife, you know, five years old, you show up to school on your first day and you're expected to know how to read, write, and log into an email. It's not realistic, guys. We need to get these kids back in school. We need to go back to school now. It's not fair to the kids, it's not fair to, it's not fair to anybody. So as far as the older kids, my oldest kid, I think the Zoom starts at 11, 11 to 2. She's pretty driven, dad's on her butt to get up and get active during the day, but I mean, we got to some kind of accountability for the children, every one responsible, productive adults to be sitting here filling my shoes and your shoes one day. Don't you think? So I could probably go on, but I think that probably gets over just about a nutshell. So I think way out to the kids, way out to the community, way out to your own kids and yourself, being community leaders to get these kids back in school. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we move item eight before post-session because we have so many people here, but maybe also take a five-minute reset so we can get this selfish lady toward the restroom, maybe let some power points get loaded up because that will work with our background.
Okay.
Is that a moment?
That's excited. All right. We'll go into five-minute break, 5:18. We'll restart in five minutes.
I think we'll all say a motion to move--
Yeah, one, yes, one motion and anything else. We'll now reconvene in an open meeting. Next, Ms. Schacher. I don't hate.
Good evening. I'm picturing a pain about instruction and I'm going to probably spend most of the time on elementary because that seems to be where we have the most questions. And so I will let you know that secondary has been using campus for five years. And so, okay, secondary's been using campus for five years and so the growing things there are not as difficult for teachers or kids because that is something that they're used to using. The courses that have been built there were built a while back and they've been tweaking those and so they're pretty much rolling on as normal. Their schedule is a little different to where they have time in the morning to work on their campus assignments and time in the afternoon with their teachers for tutoring. So with elementary, as I said, secondary, five years, elementary since March, and so it's been quite a learning curve. So there's been a lot out of our control this summer and not really knowing how things were going to land. So when we started campus last week with elementary, we knew that it was going to be very different from the spring and probably pretty difficult, especially kinder, pre-k, littles. And so originally, the first two days were a lot. You'll know I have a third grader at my house. And so Tuesday night, our team got together and reduced everything at elementary by about 50%. The thing that we want to do there is part of our asynchronous plan that we have to submit to the state says that our schedule for the day mirrors the same amount of time in minutes as a regular school day. So that's tough when it's completely online. So on Tuesday night, that was one of the things we worked on. The other thing that we heard from parents was that if they're working, it's very hard for them to support their students, which is staying at my house. And so one of the things we did is we released content. We went back and changed the dates where content would be released this week at 7:00 PM and so that peers that have to go to work the next day can make a plan for their kids. We also have two different times a day where teachers have office hours, where they're on an open Zoom so that they can answer questions and support parents. And so those are some of the changes we made. The other difficulty we had was with dual language because for our dual language kids and minors in dual language, but all of the English activities and Spanish activities were together and that was very hard for parents to figure out what we're working on today. And so beginning today, we separated Spanish language arts from English language arts and today was a Spanish day for the whole district. And so we feel like those were some changes that we got feedback from parents and a lot of parents that work in the school district, you know, were trying some of these things out. So my team works really hard to make those adjustments. There's still, there's still some things that athletic will get better and better at, but those are some of the things we've worked on. We have a new team of campus riders that just started and so they're on their third week now and so that's been a little bit different. We have Wi-Fi buses. Our Wi-Fi buses have been up and running this past week and we have already made some adjustments with that. Richard Rissware, our education person, isn't anything. He's been super flexible. And on those buses, we have an instructional monitor on every one of those buses from A to four. And so that's one of the changes that we, you know, one of the things we feel like is for support of our kids and parents too. Let's see if I can think of those. Oh, okay. We also started help desks. We had help desk in our district for principals, teachers, secretaries, when they struggled with technology, if they were able to get help. And so now we have that available for parents and kids too, where they can go in and put a help desk in. And when it was put on the website, within 24 hours, we had about 100. So parents found it and our media specialists and our digital learning team have been working to kind of work with those. Some of those have to do with technology and some of those have to do with instruction and these. And so those tickets were good about routing and keep up with and make sure that we're getting support quickly. So those are some of the changes that we've made this week. Do you all have questions for me?
And it's a board with support and a tax support. Is that like the last quarter or is that like both protected?
Is it last quarter?
Yeah, it's the last quarter. They contact the way--
So during the day, during the day, it's pretty quick response and they can call. We also release the number that they can call if they want to answer that. That's true. So there's also a number they can call and get help during the day. And our teachers actually have, in all of our elementaries, from six to seven at night have open Zooms where, because we know that parents that are working may not be able to get that during the day, so they have that open from six to seven in the evenings where they're live to give support to.
But looking at the state requirement for varying the number of hours as a time that you're in school, I mean, I think about that for a school day for elementary, seven and a half. And me as a working parent, I mean, you know, mom for eight hours plus a nine-hour work day for lunch, plus an hour commute, plus eight hours of sleep, that's pretty much 26 hours a day, which I feel like is coming from the state levels. I feel like when people are concerned about the number of hours that we're requiring, the concern and the irritation is misplaced because so much of this is kind of from the state. Can we better identify what is required, like if a student does not complete their assignment for the day, which I know is bad to say. But will they be held accountable for that or are there like 180 minutes they have to get for instruction? How can we better prioritize that for families who are struggling to do that seven and a half hours a day?
Okay, so one of the things we've done is we've asked our teachers during Zooms to walk through the campus horses so that they're actually getting help while they're working. And so what I will say to you is do the best you can. Do the best you can.
That's what I say.
Yeah.
So glad to hear that.
Do the best you can. Our teachers, our teachers are amazing. They're very willing to help and I feel like they'll meet our parents and our kids halfway.
Anytime I've had a question, my teacher responds immediately. Anytime I've had an IT help desk today, someone responds. When I talked to her on Tuesday, I was like, this is tough. Tuesday, I changed, you know? So I appreciate how responsive all of you to all the time and the parent--
I think everyone is trying to do the best that they can in a very difficult situation. We are held to rules by CTA that we have to follow. But do the best you can. Try to look at the videos, try to do some of the activities and I think it will get easier. I think we'll get used to it and hopefully faster.
Are you just talking about elementary or are you going to talk about secondary? Like are the kids being monitored to log in or are they being accounted for assignments? Because what I'm hearing is my kid doesn't log on and I think that's probably not a good idea.
It's not a good idea, but-- Okay, so for secondary, we have a little different schedule. We have Zooms in the afternoon that are about an hour for every subject and those are for tutorials because our plan that will turn into the state is a secret, which means kids can work any time of the day at their own pace and the teacher is really there to facilitate any issues that they're having. So kids can Zoom in at that time and really have some more for a tutorial with their teacher when they're struggling. And for kids who are not struggling, they can go. And so--
That's good to know with the mom because--
It is.
I'm a working mom and I'm away from all the 10 days. So my daughter told me that we have a lot of homework that--
Yeah.
Because she was working on it at 8:00, 9:00.
This is good. It's not unusual for it to be even lighter than that. Some of them, they like to work at midnight and that's okay. So yeah, that's fine. But they're working, so I think that is your question. They can work at their own pace and then get support from the teacher when they need it and their specific times. Part of our plan is that we have specific times set aside for support for kids and parents in their schedule. Did that answer your question?
I'm wondering if, say, I have a kid in high school and they don't log on, we go back to school face to face, then are they going to count, are they going to count an absent or not?
So attendance is, attendance is two ways. You can, you can be counted present for interacting with your teacher. So if you interact with your teacher, have a tutoring session, you're there, you're present, okay? Or showing progress at campus for attendance. For, there's two different things. Okay, so attendance, that's how you would get it. Our kids also have to be present 90% of the time with the content, so they have to complete 90% of the assignments daily. And so if they're not logging on from now until September 8th, that's a lot of absences. Does that make sense a little more? Okay.
Now until September 8th, as far as like specifically this online, just with the online students?
Well, when she asked about, if they, didn't you say if they start back on September 8th?
Right. On September 8th, but the ones who haven't logged on, are they going to be, have all these absences and are they going to be behind versus the ones who have been trying to log in and be counted present? And on the 8th, we go back face to face, then I wanted to make sure that--
Is there the ability to show up before September 8th?
Is there an ability?
Yeah, I was actually asking, yeah. We have the ability to force it.
Unless it's a special group that we decide to bring in early, we have that flexibility to do that. One other thing too, let's say if a child has not logged in or had anything this week, but they are still in our school district, what are the steps we're taking to reach out to those students?
So we have logs specifically of kids who we have made contact with or who don't have connectivity and those kids, we have a plan for, the teachers have reached out and talked to the kids, talked to parents, and we do have flash drives and paper supports that were delivered today by our basic transportation department. And so I know that for those kids, we want them to have a flash drive with the teacher's lessons so they, even at home, if they don't have connectivity, they can plug that in and we want them to be able to see what kids who can get online see. So we have a plan in place for that too. So that answers--
One question though, if you do have children that don't log in a lot of the time between now and September 8th, when they go back in person, is it possible that it's still the habit of days attendance are passed? You see what I'm saying? If we miss most of that time, the next four weeks is up and they don't log in at that day?
No.
No, okay. Just curious, I didn't know if that was--
If they don't log in, then we give a phone call from the attendance side of it.
Okay, call the person.
And the attendance is still flush for the state right now. Looking at the phone calls, those state attendance fees that would happen if we were still in place, it would happen the other way.
And the number of kids that we have in contact with is very, very low and those could be kids that live somewhere else, yeah, and their school maybe hasn't started yet. So it's a very low number.
Right.
The rule still applies that if you haven't been to school yet, the school hasn't started.
Exactly. Do you all realize, yes.
So I was referring to students who maybe logged in one day, but they haven't logged in since, so then they would be getting attendance issues. But if you never logged in, you may be at school in a different district and we won't know that until you actually start school, whether logging in or face to face. So some of those students may have moved. We don't know about them because they haven't been to school the first day and so that's publicly where some of those--
That's where some of those are. You can't be absent until you've been present.
I know.
Yeah.
How are the ADA's working? Working like it was before? The student, Mr. Franklin--
I don't think you're ready to hear him. He needs to have the--
No, go start.
The, y'all hear it back a little bit now? Okay. Well, Mr. Franklin was saying a minute ago, the students that sign into their Chromebook and they get counted the first day, once that they, that puts them registered for this school year, they start not going in each day, they're counted absent, their third absence, they're going to get a phone call and that's going to start the attendance process for the state accountability. On the fifth, there'll be a meeting with the assistant principal of the school, they'll do the Zoom right now. When we go back to face to face, we'll be in person or still by Zoom, but all that started again. The ones that you were talking about a minute ago, the ones that have never enrolled, usually they're already out of our system as of right now. They would already be considered at 98 until we get them from another school. We have to leave them active right now because if we take them out, they can't log in. So we're giving them two weeks to log in.
So we're giving them two weeks to log in the first time. This coming Friday, if you haven't logged in by this Friday at all, you'll be taken out. Today, all the assistant principals of the school's called about 290 kids that had not logged in to find out where they were. And then all the T-Rexes from the other school districts are now coming in. So we're able to take those students out right now. Okay, does that answer it a little bit?
Yeah, I was curious how our, you know, ADA definitely has something to do with their funding. And I want to be clear, this is the state end day as far as how we keep up with this.
The ADA is not changing, but the rules of 90% rule for grades and sitting in class and being there are in effect just like being in school. And on the 10th day, you still could be referred to court even. So all those rules are in effect right now, whereas in the spring, they were a little bit more lax. Does that make sense?
It does. Okay, thank you for clearing that.
Mr. Franklin. Mr. Cowherd.
So I want to discuss with y'all our on-campus plan. Obviously, the last few minutes, you've heard the date, September 8th, it's gone around a little bit. Let me walk through why that date is what it is right now. TA gave us guidance that says you can go 100% online for four weeks from the first day of instruction. If you change past four weeks, it takes board action. Well, our four weeks from August 10th is the Friday before Labor Day. So that would mean the first day without board action. But we can offer an on-campus option or choose to offer an on-campus option in September 8th. So that is the date that we have set in our site right now. However, you know, it's everything else we have right now. It is subject to change. However, that change would be with your action, of course. So what we're shooting for on that date, there's some things that are going to happen between now and then. And so in preparation for this meeting, I gave off three documents for us to reference tonight. And just for the benefit of everybody here, parents, this first document you're going to see, you'll be getting an email on one in this document. What it is, is our student selection document. When you read the TA guidance and what we are going by mainly for this section is on their COVID-19 reference page, there is a document that says public health planning guidance for school year 2021. And one of the things you have to do is parents get the choice. Do I want to send my kid back on campus? Do I want to keep them? Do I promote instruction? That form is in front of y'all. It's going to be a laser fish form. And every student in the district will get one. So like, for instance, in my house, I have a kindergarten and a third grader. I'm going to get two emails at some point tomorrow for both my kids. And I'm going to pick what I'm going to do. Am I going to send them back on September 8th or am I going to keep them home? So when you get that, that'll be pre-populated, you know, so it'll say your kid's name at the top. You will have to fill in your name and update email and contact number on there. The next section under selection for instructional method, we're going to hit that in a second. We want parents to see what is school going to look like when they go back. And so in that section, there will be a link to our district website. And it will have the plan that I'm about to go over. So that way, as a parent, I can sit there and see the information and decide for myself. Do I want my kid to go to school? Do I want to keep them at home? So this is one of those cases where having that parent perspective, having two kids in the district, all of us have worked on this, we put that hat on and say, you know, what would give us the information we would need to make an education decision for our kids? And so that's what we're going to talk about here in just a second. The choice of instruction delivery, obviously, is on campus or remote. If a parent selects on campus, there's going to be a pop-up there regarding transportation. You know, do you want bus transportation? If you click that, that's of course going to get sent to our transportation department for routing purposes. And they'll contact parents as far as bus numbers, times, all that kind of stuff. If you click remote instruction, there's going to be a question on there about internet accessibility. Again, so we can determine what areas we may need to get buses to again, is how will we continue to provide that service? Like I said, this form, it'll go live in the morning and we'll email it out. And it'll be open through midnight Tuesday, August 25th, so that's a week. It'll close that night at midnight. And if you don't complete it, you're going to default to on-campus instruction. And the reason we did that is for planning purposes. It's easier for me to plan. The closing day? The closing day? If you don't complete it, you're defaulted to on-campus. For planning purposes, it's better for us to assume more are coming and less show up versus the other way around. TA guidance says that this choice is held in place till the end of the first grade period. We go by nine weeks. Our end of the first nine weeks is October 19th. So whatever a parent chooses during this time, they're held to it through October 19th. Now, if they want to change, there will be a link on this form as well on our website. Two weeks prior to that end of the nine-week day, a parent can go in and say, you know what? I don't want to do remote anymore. I want to go to school and face to face. So we can switch that back and forth on that form. Again, that's, that's this form. It'll go out via Skyward. So be looking for it that way. It'll get one for each one of your kids. It is due August 25th by midnight. If you don't do it, it defaults to how your planning for you to be here in person. The next document that you have is called the on-campus instruction plan. It's like this, roughly 14 pages of, again, trying to paint a picture of the school day for our community and for our parents. What are the things we're doing? TA comes divided as their guidance into four sections, providing notice, prevent, respond, and mitigate. Your on-campus plan is how are you going to mitigate? How are you going to attempt to control the spread as their document says? This is not a silver bullet by any means, but it's practices and procedures the district's putting in place to hopefully control the spread and keep kids in school as much as possible if the parents so choose. So you'll see this, again, the link will be, you click on there. Darker Powers on the website has the back to school section. And you can have two options to this. There'll be in English and Spanish of the 14 pages that, you know, people want to scroll down further if they can. There'll also be, the headings will be in links. So if I just want to know what does elementary recess look like? I click on it, it takes me to it. I want to know what secondary CTE looks like? I click on it, it takes me to it. I want to know what visitor policy is, same thing. So all that'll be right there again, so parents are going to make an informed decision on what's best for them in their house. So just kind of going through this with y'all. You know, this was reviewed by ELAC, our district leadership advisory committee. And that Zoom had about 80 people on there. It had a wide variety of staff, administrators, parents, community members. Had some great feedback, had some great suggestions, clarifications. And I think I saw a lot of nodding heads on those screens. It answered a lot of the questions that people had as far as, you know, being comfortable moving forward and what things will look like moving forward. So again, just kind of starting on this document, there's a narrative on page one, just kind of walking us through. And you'll see the date of September 8th runs there in that little paragraph. And again, if something changes, it does require board action to, to move it away from that date. And so we would obviously be bringing that back to you then. The next page is what we're referring to as our standard response protocol. And basically what that is, is a phased approach. You know, phase one is you're operating with all these guidelines in place. Your campus is what is normal, you know, things of that nature. Phase two is a mitigation phase. So if we have one confirmed case at a facility, certain communications are go up that are required by TA to parents and things like that. There's some extra cleaning that happens in the classroom. That case may have been, and those kind of things. Phase three, again, modified classroom operations. If you have multiple cases in a classroom, some different things are triggered. The next phase is triggered if you have multiple phases or multiple cases in multiple classrooms. So that triggers another thing. And then obviously, the, the end all is that there's multiple cases, multiple locations, multiple facilities. And that's where we don't want to get, that's, that's where we are. Right now, we're in the spring of a district, a district shutdown. So there's a phased approach to it. There's not any specific percentages, you know, anything like that. We've got a team in admin that, that we look at that data at a minimum weekly, most of the time daily. And if our nurses that are monitoring this for us, they see a hotspot coming up, then we're going to talk about it immediately, make a decision that may impact the next day or even that afternoon on the campus. So we are aware of what's going on. We are constantly monitoring that, tracking that. On the third page there is titled general health guidelines. And these are just, again, some of those mitigation practices that the district has, has employed with collaboration from a variety of sources, you know, TA guidance, CDC guidance, all kinds of stuff. One of the big questions is masks. And right now, we're operating under the governor's order. And that current order says teenagers that are older must wear a mask. That's a minimum. We're going to basically say in a fourth grade classroom, you must wear a mask, fourth grade and up. That was actually a suggestion of our staff on the ELAC committee because as a fourth grade teacher, they have both 9 and 10-year-olds in their room. And so just from an equity and enforcement standpoint, we thought that was a necessary change. So that's in there. Everybody's going to be required to wear one in the common spaces, you know, your call waves, walking to and from, your electives, things of that nature, where you can't guarantee that six feet of distance. So you will have to, you know, we send in a mask at my kindergarten, you know, that kind of thing. We are doing some pre-screens already with our staff. They get an email every Sunday night. It says, hey, they'll check yourself for all these things where you come to work. There's guidance in this document for parents to do the same thing. You know, CDC has put out the guidance as far as pre-screen for your student. And so there's a link in this document for that as well.
And that, before you continue to go further, would multiple confirmed cases, would it multiple? Obviously, I'm a nice more than.
More than.
But what's our number? Do we have a number? And when we say confirmed, I mean, use confirmed?
It is a medically confirmed case. It's a lab, lab confirmed case. Yeah, it is, it is. If we haven't got tested, here's my result, it's a no case. But to answer your question, there's, there's not, we just said some classes until we know who's coming back. It depends on the number of kids and what type of class it is, you know? If it's a life skills class and it's a normal population, you know, one, maybe more, maybe two men, you know, that kind of thing. So it just depends on the setup of the class. And that's why we didn't want to put, you know, some districts put a hard fast 10% in there. We didn't want to do that because we wanted the flexibility to monitor each situation at the core.
So that, you know, evaluate that for like the campus, right?
Campus level, down to the classroom.
Classroom to campus.
Right. Because what the nurses are tracking right now, the campus nurses are looking at it, you know, obviously from the staff perspective, but then they'll start collecting data from the student perspective. They're monitoring it on the classroom level. They're reporting it on the classroom slash campus level. And then Nurse Gronk is looking at it on a district level, identifying all those things, you know, trends and if there's certain spots. So it's all taken in and all gathered and, you know, discussed.
I think that my reluctance here is that multiple could be defined as two or more. So under this phase five, you know, having two students at Dogwood and two students at Bennett, like our focus of our campuses, would that necessitate a full district shutdown? What I've heard is that, no, this plan leaves us flexibility. We're going to turn to multiple in a common sense way.
Yeah, it does. You have the flexibility and does, and it gives us the ability to go in a common sense approach. One thing the TA document says is this isn't subject to anybody else's approval. This is new candy ISD's document. And we'll run it through our processes, our, our team, and then we'll make decisions based on the data that we have.
And looking at it that way, I'm fine with this word. I think y'all have the best interest.
Because you have to consider the fluidity of the diagnosis. You know, you're diagnosed and then 10 days later, not 14, 10 days later, you're considered able to return. But anytime in that, you could have another person starting in 10 days at any point.
Right. And one thing that, that our nurses in additional duty that they've taken on and are very involved is to contacters, you know.
So how thorough is contact tracing going to be? I mean, are you looking at what so it's his dad or mom is doing? Are you looking at the classroom or?
We're looking, ours is going to be specific to classroom. And you can dump in here, need to, person that's over student health services. But basically, it's that close contact rule, you know, kids in a classroom. If I've got three kids at the table in second grade, obviously, you know, they're within six feet or more than 15 minutes. That's close contact. We're treating that a little bit different.
And we are following that.
We are following, yeah. That has been consistent with our staff this summer and we'll follow that the rest of the time. That's what Nurse Gronk has recommended.
Less than six feet for grade.
Right, less than six feet for 15 minutes or more, we're considering close contact. And that's a CDC.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Masks versus face shields?
It doesn't give any guidance. It just says face coverings.
So a face shield.
A face shield is appropriate, a mask is appropriate. Their guidance doesn't get specific as far as type of mask, grade of mask, 95, anything like that. It just says face coverings. So, you know, the things that some of us have on, clear face shields. I know some of our teachers are going to prefer those clear face shields because there's, you know, kindergarten, again, there's a lot that they need to see going on. You know, languages, you know, all that kind of stuff. So face shields, I think is probably the preference of our, our educators. But there is a differentiation between them.
So man, please, if we're addressing a false positive, how do we handle a false positive?
I believe the guidance, they just, it just says that it's assumed to be positive. You know, if, if, if you're exhibiting everything and you just say not get positive or any testing irregularities like that, you're assumed to be positive. They're going to err on the side of caution that, you know, despite whatever you want to buy into about, you know, they might not get tested, all those different theories that are out there. If they're exhibiting symptoms and they don't get checked out, then you're going to be assumed positive. That's what it is. And that again, is in the TA guidance of how to treat a case when it's identified to be a lab confirmed or other means.
Is there a part where they, I guess, they don't clear?
Yes, there's, there is some return to work in school sections in there. Again, that's, that's part of the requirements from TA. There's, there's three criteria we've got to meet, so we'll, we'll hit that in a second. Yes, school health clinics, again, that's the next section that will be on there. Obviously, we don't want children to be in there, staff in there unless they absolutely need to be. I know a lot of times kids, you know, the magic eyes that the nurse has can make all, everything go away. But we've really got to maintain, control that environment and separate those kids. And, you know, really hit home with our teachers and really make sure that they got to go, you know, that kind of thing. So.
What can you turn, I'm sorry, what can you turn, I have about that is, are there additional people identified that can support the nurse? As she goes into it, we have flu season coming. I have a related brother who's had a flu shot this year, but we have flu season coming. So not only is she going to have to deal with potential colds, you know, she's got strep and flu season and all that. Are there other people identified that can help her?
We do have some sub nurses in the district. And I believe this year, we do, we did make some additional hires for LBN. So the pool is shallow because you can imagine a sub nurse, it's very difficult to find and not manned, obviously. But there is a limited backup, if you will, for our nurses that are in place now. Next big section on there is return to school work guidelines. And that's applicable for our students and staff on there. You can see, again, this is one of those TA required proportions, you know, if they're diagnosed with, with COVID, you know, fever-free, the primitive symptoms, attending period, all that's in there. You know, it talks about that they need to be evaluated by a medical professional, which is assumed to be positive. So all those things, again, through the TA document are, are in there. Cleaning and disinfecting. Our, our support services department, our ladies and gentlemen in there, they were already cleaning using, you know, hospital-grade cleaning supplies and all that before COVID. We've increased that frequency. You know, the stuff we are already using before all this hit, it would, it would get rid of it. So we are just making those routines more frequent. You know, we've got the misters, the sprayer, all the stuff that, that we need to, you know, control it from a contamination standpoint and all that thing, just cleaning it up. We've got the equipment, we've got the supplies. And Mr. Harris and his team have got them on a good schedule, making sure our buildings are clean. The next part is your on-campus guidelines. And again, this is one of those parts that the attitude kids in this district are going to select. Okay, walk myself through their day. From the moment I drop them off at the door to the moment they come back home, what are the areas they interact with? What are the things that they do? And so, you know, is this going to catch everything? No. I mean, this, we could, what if, a scenario, well, not long with this. But I do believe that it gives our parents enough comfort and this is what the district is doing to make sure my kid can come back to school in a safe manner. So just kind of starting off there, again, all these, as this evolves, they could get tighter, they could get looser. But just know this is our starting point. So again, coming on the campus, campus visitors. We're not allowing visitors on the campuses past the reception area to start the school year. Again, controlling who goes in the building is something where it comes up, we need to know who, where, when. And that helps us to control that. If they do come in, they got to wear a face covering. We've got hands at the time of their entrances. There's a pre-screen poster, much like y'all saw at graduation. Checking your symptoms. There's a pre-screen poster, much like y'all saw at graduation, checking your symptoms, things like that. The next area is transportation. You know, those students that choose to ride our bus, no matter the age, they will be required to wear a mask. Unless an IEP or something like that dictates that they don't have to, or they're special education students, things of that nature. And that would be documented, so transportation and those drivers would be aware.
Is that required, position statement?
Believe it just has to be in the IEP paperwork. You know, as far as the hardware, then we can put it in there, that sort of thing, which are typical special ed paperwork. Breakfast and lunch. There won't be, hey, it's Friday, I'm gonna bring my kitchen filet case. We're not allowing any outside food, your parents are coming to lunch with their kid at this point in time. Again, that could be relaxed at a later point. Our cafeteria ladies are gonna do everything possible to make things rapid go. What that means, is a lot of prepackaged things, things of that nature, to give our kids a good healthy meal, but, you know, you probably don't see as many serving, you know, physical serving as you usually do. I mentioned they got them at the service, that we take care of, the kids will get what they need there. Our secondary campuses, whatever the administrator deems appropriate, we're gonna let them use other parts of the building to eat. You know, in his office in Texas, a lot of them do a courtyard, a main hallway, as long as it can be monitored by staff, and, you know, the distancing's still in place, we're gonna allow them to use other parts of the building to eat, just so that way everybody's not, not crammed into the cafeteria. All right, the next section. Arrival dismissal and transition. The goal on this is gonna be very site-specific, what the dismissal plan is. The valley range is gonna be different than New King. And so what we've told the campuses, Dr. Powers will grab the main communication from the district website, Bellmare websites, social media, things like that. Put out the maps, where, hey, this is where we want car pickup to be, this is where the buses are gonna be. So that's gonna get very site-specific. In the transition, once again, masks will be worn during those. One thing to be aware of, water fountains won't be accessible. You know, for you guys that are familiar with elementary, you know, what happens with water fountains? We put our mouth on things and not away from them. So the majority of our campuses do have refillable bottle stations, and so kids can bring a water bottle, something like that, walk up to the station and do it. There, for those campuses that don't have near as many, obviously, the water fountain will still be on, and they'll just have to be monitored for them to walk up there and get it in there, and the other way, not the, not the bottle filled away. So that's gonna be different. At the secondary, you know, again, we could, we've got flexibility there. We may stagger those dismissal times, those transition times, things of that nature. And anytime there is a major transition in the campus, that's when our custodians are gonna come behind the kids, lock down the handrails, clean restroom, all that kind of stuff. Again, a lot is being done anyway, it's just a very concerted, you know, part of the routine of the day. Restrooms, again, one of the things that's required by TA is we gotta teach kids how to properly wash their hands. And so, you know, that does not mean that you're gonna have a teacher standing in the bathroom monitoring, but they will educate the kids, and when you go to the restroom, how to properly wash their hands. We're gonna encourage kids to wash their hands over hand sanitizer, even just, you know, it's, it's the best way to do it. So we're gonna educate them on that. Elementary, we're gonna make those classroom breaks be scheduled, and then campuses are gonna have something in place, again, site-specific, to limit the number of kids in the bathroom. That seems to be a fox response sometimes, so hang on. So they're gonna have some sort of monitoring, some sort of plan in place to limit that. Elementary recess, you know, let kids play, let them socialize. We're gonna limit the number of students on the playground at a time. You know, it's not gonna be, hey, all first graders out there at a time, all fourth graders out there at a time. We're gonna control it to one or two classrooms. Now that, that's gonna be more kids outside, and that kind of thing. But again, if something were to happen, you have to be able to trace back who was working with it. And it's easier for me to trace back two classrooms than it is six, that kind of thing. Yes, it is, I heard more money on that happen. Again, when they come back inside, wash your hands, hand sanitizer, get your water bottle, that kind of thing.
I just want to know before you go on, like, I've heard so many concern for that process and cafeteria time, so I appreciate that y'all come up with a plan. It allows us to retain as much privacy as possible.
Right, and that's, and that's exactly what, what we're trying to do, is, you know, keep it as long, give it as a school experience.
Yeah.
You know, elementary recess, that's a huge issue right there.
Cafeteria, sorry. Are the lunches gonna be quite a hugely large part?
They, they will be. And that's one reason that we took the district part out of it, is because in a lot of our cafeterias, if we spread out everything, stagger lunch, and we can make social distancing happen and all that kind of thing. So, yes, we're gonna spread the tables out, you can't move them to a different area of the building. So in the cafeteria, you won't, you won't see the 22 kindergartners in rows right there, or on table, they'll, they'll be straight out.
Lunch times, though. Will they start earlier and finish later?
Well, one of these questions will be determined by how many children are scheduled to cover the face. So we try to maintain, again, flexibility, but we don't know that number of students, so. That'd be, if 90% of the kids are back, then it'll be a bigger issue than 50%.
As long as they can change on a annual basis, too.
Exactly. That's why, yeah, it could change on a per candidate basis.
You know, so it's, until we have some hard-fest data, it's, you know, we have to start somewhere. But at least we've got a starting point of, when we know a number, this is what we're gonna do.
Starting point, I said, the plan, one right here. I said a starting point, I said, the plan, one right here.
Correct, you're correct, yeah. Our classrooms, you know, we're gonna distance those as much as possible. You know, I know that's harder to do in some rooms rather than others. We're gonna make sure teachers have procedures in place, where there's not a lot of getting up, moving around, that sort of thing, you know, turning in paper, sharpening pencils, all that kind of stuff. So teachers are gonna have to revisit their classroom management procedures, things of that nature, to make sure social distancing and, you know, common supplies, you know, the classroom pencil, like, things of that nature, take care of. We do, we have equipped our teachers' classrooms with appropriate cleaning supplies. So, you know, we're not saying, you know, they have to clean their, their own rooms by eight weeks, but they do have the supplies of, hey, pass a period conference period, go lock down the desk, go lock down the door handle. You know, just every effort we can make to keep things clean, and additional work, custodians already done, we, we provided them with that. We don't wanna forget our, our special ed students. Those guys are very, in some cases, very vulnerable population, but those that need services more than most. And so, you know, we're gonna work this one with, and her team, and those kids, there is gonna one size fits all for that population. And so we're gonna work through that, and again, try to give that kid services they deserve, the services that we, that we're supposed to give them, while keeping them safe as possible. So that's a, that's gonna be a case-by-case basis on that. Pneumonia, again, we're part of the school elementary and secondary wise, a lot of those same things. So, you know, again, make sure you have water bottles, physical distancing. Kids, again, they recommend to have P as much as outside as you possibly can. It is, it is always in Texas, so we're gonna have to balance being outside P versus socially distanced. Again, that will depend on the number of kids that show up, how we schedule them, and all that. Extra curriculum student organization, there's been a lot of guidance out there, provided by UIL, TA, various organizations on specific things of that nature. Again, all this is done in this document, but, you know, for example, you know, you're not gonna have a lot of those students in four groups that ain't really attending out of town games. You know, Friday nights are gonna look a little bit different. That's just part of it, I'm just, I'm thankful we're hopefully gonna have a Friday night.
I'm just curious, I mean, we, we identify some cheerleaders in our traffic. We're talking 12, 14, 13, otherwise that one's a specific group. Call that out, rather than the rest.
Well, and the rest are in there as well, and under Fun Arts, where it talks about small pep style bands, things of that era.
But I mean, I don't understand, like, why we're calling these specific groups out?
It's just more making it awareness, like, you know, now. And again, the way we create it is, is basically, you know, the expert in, in UIL is gonna, I'm gonna lean on Mr. Sheer, things like that. So we did go ahead and make some of those things known in there, just again, to paint the picture of what on-campus back-to-school looks like. There's some athletic things in there, and, you know, football guys are a little different, you know, come to rework those pre-game activities. You know, we've got a tenant's schedule in there, you know, I'm sure Sykes working with D E C and all that kind of stuff, to get a schedule in place, so we can get that.
It says middle school to high school, everybody.
Is this, Mr. Sykes, does this apply to middle school? I believe the plan is right now not to do any middle school traveling games, it's just bar level, correct?
This is high school, we will, we will start middle school.
We can't hear you over there.
This is transitional for the high school. We will not start any middle school athletics until we return face-to-face. When we return face-to-face, we've got a plan in for a middle school schedule. The way I've illustrated it or equated it is, it's like a pendulum on a clock. We took the high school schedule for all of our sports, volleyball, basketball, football, and we took it, swung it forward, basically five weeks. We're gonna do the same thing with the middle school schedule, but the pendulum swing from middle school is a little bit different than it is gonna be for the high school.
Okay, so we're talking about the return to school program, right here, right?
Right.
So my question is, does middle school start, like, their athletic activities, our, what, the bands, or cheerleaders, all these other extra curios, do those start?
I, I can address athletics, band, and athletics and cheerleading.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Bands on the fun arts. Yes, middle school athletics, we'll start the first day, and we'll return face-to-face.
Which is September 8.
Which technically is September the 8th, unless something changes. And so we've got a plan in place for that. If something happens and we don't return face-to-face until October 1st, we've got a plan for that as well.
Okay, thanks.
It's a collaborative effort, that's why we're not allowed to read that stuff. Let's talk about elementary electives. You know, those are music, art, computer, and library. And library, that's a common space, so again, you know, masks are gonna be worn if there's more than one class in there. This, again, this is all dependent on the number of kids that show up, so that, that could change there. The computer lab, really, the kids won't see a whole lot of difference there, other than they're gonna bring their own individual book, rather than working on the, the computer that's already in the lab. I've been extremely educated on, on music and the differences of why we need different spaces than music and fun arts and band. You know, there's gonna be some different spacing in there, potentially even singing outside, you know, they can pay eight feet between each other versus six feet, you know, for those purposes, but we've got that in there. We are providing individual art kits, so students won't have to share supplies, we don't have to worry about that. Secondary?
Can I ask you, what's the difference, like, the six feet, eight feet, to decide, like?
Mr., again, rely on the expert in this, but Mr. Sheer, 'cause I had the exact same question when I did this document. I'm like, okay, we hear six feet all the time, why now I see eight, and even down some of this stuff. In secondary, you're gonna see 10. Not to be gross, but think about yourself seeing, and you're, you're not TA, you're doing all that kind of stuff, you know, get singers filled up that properly. And so we wanna make that distance even more so because of the, you know, the push and all that, so it, like I said, he educated me, he gave us some details on why, why we need those extra spaces in that activity, 'cause I questioned the exact same thing from a consistency standpoint.
Was the director's recommendation to have extra footrests, and what's provided by CDC or anyone else?
That is a study that, I can't call the organization that he cited, but it, it had to do with, you know, music specifically, fun arts specifically, and why the extra space was needed.
So is the extra space, and they, they say without P, the face shields, no masks?
When possible, they need to wear it, because again, question of mine.
Are we wearing those, not on the 10th, would be necessary?
I asked.
Is the technique gonna cause a reduction in overall class accommodation?
It could, it could.
In that case, I feel like I would be able to, science.
I mean, again, it depends on how many kids show up in a program, but, and that's the, and that's the guideline. If we get in there and we see we're gonna accommodate the spacing, you know, we all know guidance changes these days. You know, we could get in there, and that could be a shift, that is just, you know, he's the expert in the district on fun arts, and I lean on him, and that's what, he did his research, he did his background stuff, and that was the consensus he came to consulting on his group.
He made the point that, right, that call?
He made the recommendation of that.
I think we're all just surprised that six feet has been, except for. I don't have a problem with 10 unless it means that 20% of the kids will wear the choir pants. Then I think we should work that, I mean, I think we should base, the little part is, we can't have the kids that we have with a minimum of six. But I don't want anyone to be left out because we're being extra.
And again, once we see who comes back, that's something that we can totally look at and say, okay, if, if we do have 30 kids interested in choir, and we're only allowed for 20, then do we move a different space in there? One of the recommendations is using large spaces.
Right, right.
You might have choir in the cafeteria or something like that, or in the front row.
We'll be looking into the numbers, making decisions. We would like to, this is a starting point for us, so, as we can along, it's a change.
Well, and again, you know, one thing that we've got to keep in mind in creating and reviewing this document is, you know, it's for the parents. You know, there's gonna be some internal tweaks that we obviously do, once we see the kids in our buildings. This is just an initial thing to give these folks, myself, somebody like you, here's a picture of what people live down the place, so that way you can make an informed decision.
Oh, our spirit, yeah, also, our extra curriculum is telling you you can travel, I mean, lots of other things. Where we're going, obviously, the public eye, it's kids, probably more than, in my opinion, we're probably a little further. I need to go to a question.
And I would, I'll mention the travel. A lot of that's coming from other districts, and our district requested that they, because of capacity issues, they're wanting to have any of their home folks at the games, just as we do alongside them. And so a lot of that's been driven by other districts in our, in our, in our district too, as to what votes are. So if we wouldn't allow more of our community to be at the game, we'd ask the visiting team to send the less much, so we can go on both sides. We will be maintaining social distancing as well, capacity levels and that sort of thing. So I think the district have, have kind of come together across extra curriculum activities in particular, to kind of work together on travel, it gives them people in our own district seats to be able to go to the games. That's, that's where a lot of that's been driven.
Well, and again, it's based on what we're seeing right now, we keep seeing it, you know, trend downward, the, the change. It is not etched in stone for any value. We see data, advice, and guys, show us that, and we can make that.
One question, or concern, they say that it's juvenile for a mask during instruction. That just brings a question, are the kids required to sit at their desks with masks on in the classroom?
Well, the governor's order right now says it above, and so that answer would be yes.
So I know some schools in the area are, when a child is seated at their desk, they can take their mask off while they're at their desk.
With the distance.
Right, yes, you can, if, if you can, then here's social distance, but again, depending on the number. You get more kids and can safely accommodate the distancing, then it would be.
So is it the governor's order or TA's order? I mean, just blank here, because, I mean.
The mask order, we, the mask order is from the governor's office, and it flows through the TA guidance, and in that TA document, it refers to the governor's order, which takes two years.
Governor's order is a TA, that's for compliance, it's a compliant side of the governor's.
Well, control actually is the one that has, well, control of this.
That's where they're, that they've said.
Well, I mean, I, one of the controls, I mean, is the one that claims when anything happens, so, I mean.
Well, the mask order is done from the government, so how can we know about the government? It's easy to say that till somebody gets sick. It's easy to stand up here and say that till somebody gets sick, so we're gonna do what's best for our kids. And yes, it may be a little bit overboard, but we're not gonna stand up here and make decisions that are my best for kids, based on being a little bit underwood. I wanna be overboard, I wanna be a little bit better than what we need to be, so we can ensure that that little second grade kid has every chance to get back at school, and that little kid has the best chance that he can be safe.
Agreed.
So we are gonna do what the governor says, we're gonna make good decisions, we've been working for this for months. Many people don't realize that this just did not pop up. We've been studying and working through this for months. We as a board decided not to make quick action, meaning by that is just throw the kids back and see how it's, how it all settles out. We decided to take these additional two weeks that are very difficult on families. I've got kids, and so does everybody at this table. But we made a decision to say, we're gonna grab our thoughts, we're gonna get. But we made a decision to say, we're gonna grab our thoughts, we're gonna get good data for two weeks. So then we're ready to send the kids back and not have to circle back around and start over. So I want everybody to understand that we are working hard. We hear you, trust me. My phone's got ninety-seven calls today. I got it, we're, we're doing our best, but again, our decision-making process may not be as massive as all of those want to do our kids in school right now, today. But if we're willing to take just the two additional weeks to ensure that all of our planning times are in place, we might look to save the year versus making a quick decision and losing it. Bill, fair? So I want everybody to understand that we're really working hard up here and these administrators, these school board members, they, we, we have families too, and we wanna do what's best for these kids, so.
Absolutely, we all have different opinions and I think we're, uh, we're really got to work with our administration too, so.
That's right. Go ahead, Matt.
All right, uh, last thing we'll touch on on this document is secondary CTE. And again, a lot of CTE is hands-on, uh, trade work. And so those teachers have some course-specific things that they'll be doing in their, their labs, their, their instruction areas that they'll, they do, I'm sharing, well, they kind of, on the thing of that nature. Uh, the Agson Center, the Ag Bar, uh, that's remained open through all of this, uh, so students can still work on those projects and get ready for their shows. That will hopefully be able to have, uh, there are the same guidelines in place out there. You know, we encourage them to wear a mask, you know, so individuals maintain distancing standard. All that kinda stuff that has been in place this whole time out at Ag facility is still in place and, um, I'm not aware of the awareness there whatsoever out there at this point, uh, following those guidelines under our Ag form. So, uh, sorry for the slow walk through that, but I think it was necessary to just, again, paint the picture for, for these guys, for all of us of what the day's gonna look like. It's not gonna look like we were used to, um, back on March 12th. It's gonna look different, so just wanted to educate and inform so that way everybody can make the best decision for them in there.
There are questions on that, so, um, 'cause I think a couple of them have some additional questions. Uh, concerning, um, ASI Dumat versus the lab test, so is it gonna have to be a lab test for us to be classified as positive? Is that, is that the current statement that we're making?
Let me, let me refer to this a quick, give it just a second.
You do refer your document.
Yes, it says, if you're, I'm looking at, again, just the TA COVID-19 Public Health Guidance. Says, um, if an individual has symptoms that could be COVID-19 and is not evaluated by a medical professional or tested for COVID-19, such individual is assumed to have COVID-19 and they cannot return until they, to the campus, until they complete the three-step criteria listed above, which is fever-free for 24 hours without medication, improvement of symptoms, and at least 10 days of absence in personal period.
So basically.
We might have to have negative tests at that, if they pull the.
Right, so if they meet those three criteria, they can come back. And that, and again, that is, you know, like we said before, there's some recommended, required, suggested language from TA and they, it's under the section on page four where, you know, it says the district will do this. It is a requirement of the district, so we're, we're following that to the, to their letter for sure. That's a lot to digest, so there are, you know, questions that we can, uh, I can address those or I can get back to them on a later date. But again, this document will be on the website in the morning. English and Spanish, uh, will be broken out, so if you get to the section you want to. There'll also be a link on the survey form that will be sent out tomorrow that my parents can, again, click on it, get the information before they click on, on campus or.
And the survey that we did in, was it June or we did the one?
Yes, sir, we did one earlier this summer, just to gather some data, you know?
And that data was fifty-fifty, right?
That data was yesterday.
That people have to stay on.
Right.
The survey results.
Believe, Dr. Gars, can those survey results still be found there? I believe they can.
They are on the website, yeah. They're back in school, babe.
Thanks.
Yes.
It will have till the 25th to finish the, uh, well, gather data.
Right, all right, on the 25th, you know, that next day we'll be able to see how many chose to keep remote, uh, how many chose to stay or come back on campus and how many of those, you know, didn't respond and defaulted on campus. So we'll have that data on the, on the.
Are you planning on talking about transition week?
Yes, that is, that's the next one.
So if the students, yes, we discussed, as soon as we can go back, September 8th, or TA guidelines, like we chose to. As soon as we go out, right? As of the way we're, we're scheduled, have to go through our process. Right, as soon as we can go back, September 8th.
Do, do all this in place, do the data in place, do everything lined up again so we can, you know?
Just so everybody else can get the air.
Yes, and everybody needs to understand too, so what our theory was in it is our teachers went back at the earlier part of the month, so went in and not taking a quick decision, 'cause these decisions affect your kids. It affects my kids that's in school, just like the rest of these guys. So what we wanted to do there was to see those teachers come back. We wanted to see those kids come back, of the teachers, into those buildings and see if we seen a spike in that, which we've not seen. So part of that was, again, I know it's crazy, but that, that's, that was our theory, is we get them back in the building, let's see how the buildings react, let's see how things go, and the numbers were really good. So now we're in place that we, like Ty said, we'd love to start tomorrow, but based on us waiting those two weeks to get qualified data that matters purely in county I C and our city as well, what I'm saying, we don't care about what's happening in Conroe. We care about what's happening here. So once we have data that happened in, in our schools, then we initiate the process tonight so we can get our kids back on the, on the 8th. Which hopefully things work out, we move forward. Um, but, you know, another thing that I wanted to make sure that people understand is this is a TA. If you decide to send your kid to school, once you commit, you can't change that to October 19th. That's the, at the end of that first month. Same thing if you decide to go online. Once you commit one way, you're committed. Those rules are not made by others, those are TA ones. So understand that there are certain rules that we can do local, but there are certain rules that are outside our ability to be able to make in this model. So when you get your survey, you do what's best for you, your family and your child, and then we'll go from there.
That brings me to a question. During this time of, uh, online instruction, a lot of people are still sending their kids to daycare. And so our daycares are open long with, uh, extra kids for right now. Well, uh, when they go back to school on the 8th, some kids aren't gonna go back and they're gonna choose, uh, remote instruction. What kind of plan do we have in place to assist our daycares? Because they didn't sign on to help our kids with the prom book, so I'm just wondering, do we have, I know we got an email that mentioned it, but I'm just wondering, uh, and I'm sure a lot of other parents are wondering, what's in place to help those daycares who are now caring for our kids through this time or when the kids go back? Uh, some go back, but some don't.
I'm gonna bump into this shop around now.
Um, yes, about daycares.
Yes.
Okay, so we met, I think, um, we sent a little bit of information. We met with, um, I think, five, um, five of our daycare center leaders last Tuesday. Um, and there were a couple of things, um, that they requested. Um, and one of the things was training for the people that work, um, in their centers. And by Friday, we had online training, ready to go, recorded, to push out, um, for them. We also have a grant with a few of our daycare centers, um, and so our, we have coaches that go into those centers. Um, and so we have offers for them to go in at eight o'clock in the morning for a little while to try to get them started, make sure that they can connect, make sure that they understand campus.
But we are working closely. The ones who asked. I would speculate that the parents in their kids' daycare are gonna be the first one to, I don't think, prefer children. Who'll be the first one signing up for your first instruction, because if you're sending your kid to a group party, you still have to care. I imagine it should be just like this, your child would be.
That's where you're asking about, oh, we have back.
I was asking, but if you go to daycare, they could just go home to school, I get that, but in this period, then? In this period between now and then, we have somebody helping the daycare?
So you weren't talking about, I'm looking at that for you, 'cause that's, okay, I was just making terms.
Well, I mean, they, they could still send them to daycare, but why would you? If they're sending to daycare, why not send them to school? My question was specifically, are we helping the daycares? We have someone from our district helping the daycares.
We have provided Zoom trainings for, um, some of those that are at daycare centers that have, that requested the training, yes.
Okay, Matt. Um, we can work with the transition week?
Yes, sir.
Again, August 31st.
Yes, and I believe, um.
We have copies for everybody who wants to leave.
Should be a copy back there.
Now, but if they leave, we can have copies on there to work with, so you guys have copies tonight to look at. Or it's gonna be on the website, tonight, power, or tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
That may, uh, create a, you know, this is.
This will be our transition week, August 31st.
And so basically, what we're looking at in the week of August 31st through September 4th, again, I can say, again, this is assuming a September 8th start date, is basically a time to give parents those first day of school experiences, because our guidelines go in place on day one. And so I know, you know, as again, as parents of kindergarten, you know, there's just certain rites and passes as you do that first day, walking your kids to class, all that kinda stuff. Well, those won't be in their birth guidelines. And so what we wanted to do is, is ease our community, ease our kids onto our campuses, uh, again, just so that way they can feel comfortable and secure on what they're walking into on that next week. Uh, so again, this is the week of August 31st through September 4th. Uh, guidelines are gonna be in place at, at all of our campuses. Uh, basically, it's the same thing we did last spring when we did the supply pickup. It's no more than a hundred students and parents in the building at a time. Uh, only immediate family members, uh, parents and siblings will be allowed in the building. Everybody's gonna wear a mask and, um, that's gonna apply to all our campuses. At our high school, uh, on our field houses, again, that ratio from then is, uh, twenty students and parents in at a time, and our coaches are gonna monitor that. Uh, we do have some site-specific ratios for the Mackenzie High School CTE building and Infinity that are on that list as well. So the schedule for that week, uh, Monday, August 31st, is an elementary night for fifth grade, so our fifth graders will be allowed to come in the building, drop off their supplies, get familiar with their teacher, that kinda thing. Again, we're, we're monitoring, you can go in and out. Uh, Tuesday, September 1st, that would be our third and fourth grade. They'll be able to come to our elementary campuses, drop off supplies, meet a teacher, uh, if they're new to the district, get familiar with the building. Uh, Wednesday, September 2nd, is elementary first and second grade. That is also our high school freshman day. Again, kids new to the campus, they can come, walk through their schedule with their parents, themselves, uh, get to know high school staff, all that sort of thing. And recreating that, you know, freshman orientation, new to the building experience in a controlled environment. Uh, Thursday, September 3rd, is gonna be pre-K and kindergarten as well as middle school sixth grade. Again, those kids that are new to campus, we, uh, visited with the secondary principals, all the principals about this, and, you know, we didn't feel like seventh and eighth grade was necessary for ourselves, more juniors and seniors. Those really just kids new, new to the campus themselves. So again, we'll have this online and as well in the back. Uh, 31st is fifth grade, September 1st is third and fourth grade, uh, September 2nd, first and second grade, as well as freshmen. Thursday is pre-K and K, middle school sixth grade. Uh, our staff will be practicing the guidelines that are in place, is really hitting on the following, you know, continue to practice social distancing, for congregating, that sort of thing. Uh, we didn't just pull these numbers up anywhere. We are using the, the retail industry standard, actually a step above one person for every five hundred square feet. Um, I think Walmart Target, those guys, we're using one for two hundred, um, our campuses. We have done the math, Mr. Badgeld, we have, and we can more than safely accommodate that. And then, you know, obviously, again, we, families work here, we'd love it when our families send their kid to school here. If, if mom or dad has to bring their kid with them, then they need to stay in the classroom. So again, trying to get back to normal, give families and parents that opportunity to experience that, uh, your first day of school in a different way. Get those, get those pictures made that you're gonna hold on to forever, have those experiences. Uh, do all those things that you typically put on the first day that, uh, unfortunately, we're not gonna get to these days. We're trying to put that in place for our families. So again, this will be on the website, there's also a copy in the back, and if anything changes in the course, we'll keep you updated, so. That's the three I had. Anything else?
I just wanna say thanks. I, this is a lot of work. I appreciate the provide. I have kids in the district, I work full-time, I'm a nurse practitioner, so I'm in private practice. I'm seeing some, like, office, okay? I know how crazy this illness is. Um, it's a state. We're gonna have to live our lives around it. Um, it's gonna get easier to deal with, you know? We have to get through this year and learn how to do everything to, but I am so proud of the way our district is doing. I really appreciate the hours and I appreciate the thought for the kids. I would be ready to send my kid back to the day. I love the fun to go back to school. I'm done with our life, okay? I was not meant to be, I'm just gonna fall. But, um, yeah, we had to have time to learn. Because it's gonna be crazy at first, we've got a lot of learning to do. So I think a four weeks for us is.
I appreciate your. Well, and something else with the senior, you know, I know the seniors got affected last year, but seniors this year again, really affected. So, and I know with the teachers, administration's working hard to keep everything going. These teachers, most, ninety percent of our teachers are working more hours than they've ever worked, than they've ever had to work. I know parents are frustrated, I know everybody's frustrated with doing this online jump. Uh, I hated all this data, I have to do Zoom meetings for my business and it's not fun. But I know our teachers and administration are working more hours than they've ever put in in this industry. They didn't go to school to work at seven, eight o'clock at night answering questions on emails or anything else, so I do appreciate it. Like we all said, I want my kid to go back to school tomorrow. Uh, he sits around at the house on Zoom meetings, he goes to football practice or whatever else. They need to get back to enrolment, it's not fair to these kids, so I do apologize to teachers and administrators for all the.
And I would just add too, that I think there's not one administrator or teacher or staff member that would want anything less than their kids getting the blessing. I, I got to thinking the other day and I shared with my family, if our senior high school had to deal with this, I don't know what I would've done, based on the kind of kid I was at that time. Uh, it's hats off to our students too for doing what they're doing, to push through this. The challenges that our, our students are facing, it's just amazing that they, that they were able to do it. And unfortunately, um, it's been a time of many challenges for adults as well as the children. But hats off to our children as well, our staff, and also for y'all's support and guidance and perseverance with this uneasy time, for sure.
I will say, we have all of our principals here. I want to say, number one, thank you. You were literally the front line. Your work is not on unnoticed, people that you leave here, uh, in your schools. You gotta keep listening to mine, because I know just as well as there are people up here, we obviously have absolutely different opinions. And that is clear, okay? And I know that you have staff that have different opinions. So thank you, the principals in this room, uh, for being on the front line, being the people that are trying to lead, uh, on the front lines for our administration. Uh, we know this is not easy. We know that online education is obviously not a niche, uh, for educators in the past. We're moving into, we're leading the era, education is changing, college, now the grade school. Uh, so we do appreciate your reference, Ken. I thank a couple of board members, number one, for, uh, this is not easy, we understand, people are upset. I'm upset. I'm, you know, passionate about, just passionate for every one of your kids, not just my own, passionate for the athletic, passionate for the band, or passionate, uh, for the kid that is drunk. And it, it doesn't matter what they are, ag, passion for everyone, and I know that we want to get back to that, I support that one hundred percent. And I also understand that there's medical, uh, you know, processes we have to take. The sickness is here, just like Wendy said, she deals with it every day.
The sickness is here, just like Wendy said, she deals with it every day, I'm gonna listen to her, but it's, obviously, she's got the expertise and the experience. But I'm also gonna speak out when it comes to governmental reach, and I should, right, because that's mine, and not necessarily everyone else's up here. But that's mine, so, and I respect the others that are up here as well, and therefore, so, thank you all. We appreciate the attendance, number one, for those that, you know, the pain to speak for their children, so thank you.
Yes?
Like everyone else here, I think we all have strong opinions, and I feel, for everyone who has reached out to me, I do, I'm a working parent. I feel extra passionate about speaking out for elementary school students, as I'm the elementary parent on the board right now. But everyone on this board has also at one point had an elementary school student, and so the administration, Mr. Conriss, you too, you also have kids who are understanding the struggle that online learning for a first grader is not the same as online learning for a senior high school. So this is not, I think, what any of us wanted, but I appreciate how so leave, responding to all kinds of feedback to get as best as possible, try to do as hopefully as possible classroom experience for these kids. Um, can't wait to get back, excited to send my kids back, I'm gonna be checking that box, if that.
I mean, it's like a lot behind me.
And I appreciate everyone who came, like, I'm so excited to see such a community involvement in this decision. It's perfect for more people in this week than ever before, you're just so.
You know, and I'd like to just end, you know, this part of it is, you know, everybody, uh, many of you might not know, but five of us up here walked the halls when you came, we went there. Now, one of them wasn't obviously in existence, you know, and Liz went there in seventy-eight. That's a joke, that's a joke. Uh, she was, uh, ninety-one, yeah, she was ninety-one. So we got ninety-one, ninety, ninety-six, I'm ninety-two, and Craig's like two thousand and one or something, ninety-nine. So we walked the halls, we, we're quartering, we're quartering in county kids. I mean, we're, we're here to do what's best, we really don't disagree on less than one percent of things, uh, but I'm with Greg, yes. I mean, I, I don't want him to be doing all half the stuff that we have to do, but we're, we're trying, I'm like, you know, I'm with Greg. I mean, I, I don't wanna be none of this stuff, but what I don't wanna do is jeopardize this school year overdoing something wrong. We're gonna do our best. These teachers, I mean, my daughter's in eleventh grade, her teacher responded to her the other night at eleven-twenty at nine. So, uh, everybody's doing what they know, but so are the parents, you guys are out there fighting. I know I was out at home today, and I, and I went into the home, she had a second grader, a fourth grader, the seventh, uh, second, a fourth, and a seventh grader. They got a home, and it was, it was, it was, it was making, trying to deal with, trying to deal with, it was just overwhelming. So, uh, we appreciate you guys coming tonight, we, we love, like, that's definitely community support. Uh, don't let this be your last time, though. I would encourage you, there, we're always here, there are always things that you guys can continue to support, the school district, and the board, through your teachers, uh, and your students. Uh, and we want you guys to know that we've really worked hard to try to do the best, like Ty said, I don't want him there two weeks ago, but we're hoping that the decisions that we made as a group, and as an administration, will get us back where we don't have to stop. So we appreciate any of you guys coming tonight, um, it really encourages us, we're gonna have you guys come tonight, and listen to what we have to say, and hopefully have a better understanding that these decisions are made over the last three or four months. We've been making these decisions to get us to this point, so we can get these kids back in the classroom, uh, because that's what we want, you know. And we're, yes, and there're gonna be some ugly roads, yes, we're gonna try to work on them the best that we can. Because at the end of the day, for every one of these eight kids of this board, and all of our administration, we truly care about the kids. We wouldn't be doing this if we didn't. So kids are of importance still, and making them safe is why we're here. So we appreciate you guys coming, so, anybody have anything else?
Item six on the agenda is closed meeting, the board will not meet in closed meeting under authority of Texas Governor Code 551.074. For purposes of personal matters, Governor Code 551.071, for attorney consultation, Governor Code 551.072. For deliberation regarding purchase exchange, lease, or value, property, and the action as a result of closed session discussion will take place when the board reconvene, uh, ends its closed meeting, uh, here, going to that seven forty-eight. Those are exhausting meetings. Close, uh, Gordon's closed meeting at eight thirty-eight. And we'll move on to item seven, what's the agenda, the reports from, proposals, board meetings, but haven't it? Most of those are exhausting, so have any other? Item out of the agenda is consideration of calendar, consideration of minutes, consideration of finance report, consideration of purchase report, consideration of personnel, the board consideration twenty, 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 twenty-one, bond, I mean, a board meeting date, considerations of beyond construction, required waivers for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Any other questions or further discussion on this item? Is there a motion to approve the item of the consent counter? Motion has been moved in consecutive, there be no further discussion of will be taken, all those in favor say aye. Proposes no, the motion is approved. Item ten of the agenda is consideration of district goals presented by Mr. Cowan.
So Pat, I promise I won't think on this last one. Uh, every year we need to improve our district goals, so, uh, obviously those are the guiding force of what we're working towards and their part in the evaluation. Uh, these are the same goals that we had last year, uh, District One, goal number one, involving increasing student achievement. Uh, District Two, or District Goal Two, providing a safe and orderly environment. Uh, Goal Three, uh, correct planning and visioning, uh, to maximize resources. And Goal Four, increase opportunities for parents to get involved.
Are there any other further discussion or questions? Is there a motion to approve district goals?
Second.
Motion has been moved in consecutive, there be no further discussion of will be taken, all those in favor say aye. Proposes no, the motion is approved. There be no further business, the meeting is adjourned at eight forty.